Evening. It being July 28, 2022. This is the Acushnet Planning Commission. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
I make a motion to open.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. With that, this meeting is being YouTubed, audio and videotaped for the public. Uh, what do we have here?
General business?
General business. Chair, welcome in the media notification quorum. We do have enough attendance minutes, gentlemen. If you had the opportunity to read minutes, 20 June 23, 2022.
I would make a motion to approve. Yes, as typed.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Bills? We have bills? You want to wait till the end of that?
We'll do bills and correspondence at the end.
Okay. With that, be kind enough to introduce yourself for me all the way around.
Dr. Mental Town Planner.
Mark Sanorizio.
Brian DeChamps, member.
Rick Ellis, member.
Absent. Mark Francois and David DeVigna. With that, first public hearing, Acushnet Company, continue public hearing through new site plan approval. I thought we had you guys all stringed away.
We thought we were stringed away. I think we are today.
Yeah, I think today will be.
Yeah, it will be, yeah. I'll just get my board. I'm Bill Madigan, UGAF, here on behalf of the Acushnet Company, also with Charles Sands with the Acushnet Company. I think tonight, we really just came in to drop off the milars or to have them signed tonight, if possible. May a few minor changes to the plan going back a couple of weeks ago. I think they're more cost-saving measures than... Then anything else? If you'd like, I could just recap them for the...
Gentlemen, you need that? Are you all set? You need a recap?
I mean, just very quickly.
Very quickly. We modified the T on the, I guess, the east side of the building, shrunk it up a little bit. Cost savings measure for earthwork and what have you. Modified a little bit of the drainage over here. That was so that we could avoid interfering with the six-inch irrigation line that was under, that it currently is underground, it's to remain. And then the footprint of the building just reduced in area by a few square feet. So, there's been really no increase in impervious area, no increase in anything really, other than those, those couple of minor modifications. Conservation approved the plan last night at Concom, so we're all set with them. I brought the milars with me tonight for signature, if you're so inclined to do so, and that's pretty much the sum total of it all.
Gentlemen, any questions?
What's the status of the stormwater permit?
The status of the stormwater permit is, we're still waiting on that from the outside consultant, and the way they left it with conservation, I guess conservation is the administrating party of that stormwater permit, and no one said that there's anything coming up that was problematic. But if there was something that was to come up, we would just amend the order of conditions to accommodate any change that might be required. The change would be only required, I think, down at the drainage basin. I don't think there's anything up in here in the main project area that would be subject to any change.
If you could just, if you could just give a copy of the final order of conditions, would that stormwater permit incorporated into it? That would be good.
I think we can do that.
For files.
Okay. No problem at all?
Brian?
Nope, I'm all set.
Doug? With that, is there a motion to sign the milar?
Approved.
Motion to sign the milar.
All in favor?
Aye.
Actually, more than one.
Well, we're only doing one tonight. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Only one tonight.
I brought extra pens to try to expedite that, so.
How many copies do you have?
Well, whatever's...
On the milar, how many copies?
Well, I have two.
I guess, how many?
How many milars?
Twelve.
Okay.
And what we thought we would do, provided it's acceptable to you, is that once you have them signed, I'll take them back to the office, run two sets of prints for Doug so you could have them here for a record, and then we record the...
Okay with that?
Yeah.
We record it. There's two copies of the plan, the unsigned plan, right now, and
the milars are here.
Bring the milars up, and we'll start out with it.
Fortunately, the signature block is a little bit of a different location on each sheet. We will help to figure that out.
Oh, that's automatic disapproval.
Well, it's got a pin all the way back.
Maybe that difficult for last one?
And do we want it on the top?
Well, we should put it at the approval date as well.
Yeah, it would be today.
Oh, yeah. This is definitely, you always suffer here for the night. Where's this one down here?
It was tough enough trying to find a spot to put all those signatures on.
Do you need more than two copies of this for your club?
Uh, yeah, I'll end up bringing one to Pam. You get me two.
Whatever you need.
Yeah, if you give me two signed copies, I should be able to get one with Pam.
Do you want a date of approval and date signed on this?
Yes, please.
Uh, date of approval tonight?
Would be tonight, yes.
And the same.
Like you know, Jerry Golf here. Left, right, left, right.
When you respect the link?
Right now, we're just finalizing the drawings. We're hoping to take round October time.
Have you started talking to the building commissioner at all on this here?
I'll probably leave that with the architect to... The architect to stretch that discussion a little bit.
This is for the Acushnet Company to pick up a couple of their projects.
You have more than one?
I just do.
That pen, the right-hand marker, some deep paper.
You're running ECO ready? It's doing work. So with that, you're going to get two copies of that to Doug, one for Pam. Do you need any others?
No.
Anybody else?
Yep.
You'll take care of that for us, please?
Then we'll record the, we'll record the plan, give you the recording information that goes along with it.
Please call Doug, go Paul, and give him the book and the page.
Sure.
How's the plan?
They can take one of those copies along.
There you go.
Just one this way and one that way.
One this way and one that way.
Thank you.
That's it? You guys are all done, huh?
Well, we're done this part. The work is yet to begin. Should be good. We appreciate all the time you took with it and help you gave us on the project and...
We appreciate how you did it.
Good luck. Oh, we'll beat those winter conditions. Or was a little late to start a project like that.
And I'll be in touch.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you have any questions or anything like that. Thanks so much for your time. Much appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Great.
Next, the only agenda is a form. That was for Mr. Moniz. He came in the last meeting for the covenant release. He got the lots released. I'll have to contact him about getting the estimate with the remaining part straightaway.
Okay. Discussion for solar array on Park Drive?
Uh, yes.
Anybody here for that?
Uh, yes, they're here via Zoom.
Okay. Through Zoom, who are we looking for?
I believe we have Mike at...
Michael, are you out there in Zoom land?
Michael, Sarah. Oh, there we go.
Hi.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. With that, you are here for the solar array on Park Drive, correct?
Yes.
Okay. You want us to sign the performance security deposit money paperwork needed to finish and sign before any work can be done on the site. Is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct.
What do you have on this, Doug?
Uh, so last meeting, we were working on reaching a price for the bond in an acceptable form, decommissioning. Working with developer, we've reached a price for the bond. They're prepared to post the bond with a total of $941,112 to cover the 20-year inflation schedule. Current in the process of pulling the bond. Their company has actually already signed the documentation to begin work and starting to deal with the process of getting their building permits eventually. I know there were some easement concerns that the board had previously, speaking with developers, the project managers with Sincarfa. They're all underway with addressing a lot of these, the easement concerns and access concerns to get to the site right now. And we've also been discussing the pre and post-construction entrance and how that'll look for the neighborhood following. Just addressing some security, security gate concerns up at the entrance, vinyl fencing, and just making sure everybody's happy and everybody's going to be a good neighborhood out there. So, from my viewpoint, we really just have to sign the decommission agreements today, as long as everything's acceptable with the planning board.
Gentlemen?
I'm all set.
Do we need to read these minutes? You guys are all set with these?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Okay. Motion to sign the performance guarantee?
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Any other pens, Doug?
Thank you.
Doug, I think we just had a quick clarification as to what can be done while we're waiting for the bond to come in in the next few days. Can we actually start filing for our building permit?
Uh, I'd be okay with that.
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Yeah, we have the documents signed, everything's...
You have documentation for the performance one?
Yes, yeah. I've been working on with them. I'm well satisfied. I think we kind of agreed. What would you say, 30, we'll say 30 days following this, this date, we'll have the bond posted with the town.
I think we can, we can expect to have it next week, but sorry if I'm mistaken.
No, it's actually supposed to be, it's supposed to arrive either today or tomorrow to us, so we can definitely get that over to you sometime next week.
All right, perfect.
Okay. As long as all that stuff's put together, you guys are all set, right?
Yep.
Doug, anything else you have to?
Uh, no, just there's the pre-construction stuff, and I spoke with Mike briefly about it. Just wanted to have a pre-construction meeting out at the site, just to finalize some of that, what was shared with me on the pre-construction plans. I know there are some current concerns there, and just being able to finalize everything out at the site with the building commissioner, hopefully early next week, if that works out.
Doug, this is Jason Mansell from Sincarfa. Is that with you and the building commissioner? You want to be there as well, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay, you guys all set with all that?
We'll work to set that up. Okay.
All set? Thank you, folks. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Solar array on the way. Next discussion, A and F land, roadway improvement, Bradford Street, Zenith Engineers.
Yeah, we can talk quickly on this one. All right, so we have Bradford Street approved. He currently has three, three buildable lots that he's working on. Two of the homes have been completed. He's looking to get his third house up and going at this point. But building permits being withheld right now, we don't really have any sort of surety for the roadway. I remember the overall plan for Bradford Street is to have it accepted as, as a publicly accepted way for the town, although it wasn't a subdivision and didn't go the route of subdivision, so we weren't going to be able to go the route of having a covenant. But speaking with Mr. Dara, he's, he's okay with being able to post some sort of surety, roadway surety with the town in order to continue work and get that building permit issued.
That sounds fine, as long as the amount is acceptable to...
Yes.
...public works.
Uh, yeah, I spoke with, forgive me, it was, it might have been two weeks ago, I spoke with Dan about it. But we had looked at some of the estimates provided, Bradford Detera and Sons, and also the Asphalt Company. Said we were looking around 30, 35,000 to complete the remainder of the work out there, if you'd like to see that with documentation.
Are you satisfied with that?
Yeah, well, I, yeah, so pretty much, the last meeting didn't go that well, so...
Just introduce yourself to the people on TV, Lynn.
Yeah. So, so I'm Jeff Detera, from Detera Development, and so the reason, if anyone, the retention bond wasn't, we didn't, we didn't complete it yet because with the situation with the old junkyard and stuff, there's, there's no room to move the material that's on site right now. So, we're kind of trapped. There's nowhere to build the retention bond until the other side is cleaned after the October. We have to figure it out. We're trying to get through the, the other side. So, you know, we thought it would have already been cleaned by now, but the meeting didn't go that well, so we're going to, we're going to work it out on the next meeting, hopefully, and we can keep moving forward to try to, you know, get the reclamation completed with sufficient funds after the other side is approved for whatever it may be, you know? So, we're just trying to get this last house going, just to keep moving with the project so we're not in a standstill, you know?
All set with that, Doug?
Yeah, I think on our end, we just need verbal approval and verbal agreement that 35,000 is acceptable for the board to post for...
Does, does that include the site, the cost of remediation?
There's no remediation.
That's not, not responsible for, yeah. That wouldn't be for the town.
Okay, so there's nothing in the way of them building that detention pond at this time?
That's, that, there was, that's, that's all clean. There's a, there's a ramp plan.
Okay, that, if it's, if it's, if that's done, then I'm satisfied with the cost.
Yeah, I know we've been talking about that.
Yeah, the ramp plan's been done on that, the every, the three lots and the, and the retention pond.
Yeah, the pond needs to still be, be constructed at this point, but I think that's well underway and it has plans to...
Yeah, so my only point was if there's a hundred thousand dollar cleanup, well, then 35,000 isn't going to guarantee anything.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
No, this is more, more for the roadway, just to make sure the roadway gets completed at the end of it.
And Dan's happy with that number?
Uh, when I spoke to him, I remember speaking with him two weeks ago, yes.
Okay, all right. Now, the form of performance guarantee, they are going to put a cash bond in with the treasurer?
Surety with the treasurer, correct?
Okay.
And I'll get that documentation all drafted.
I would make a motion that we approve the guarantee for $35,000 in the form of a cash, in form of cash posted with the town accountant.
We have interim treasurer now, so.
Okay, good. Town treasurer, then.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. You're all set?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next one, discussion, solar array.
I'll talk to you.
Cushing Lane.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
You too.
Solar array, Cushing Lane, White's Farm Incorporated, Main Street.
Uh, yeah, this one's going to end up getting continued. We, I spoke with the attorney for the project, considering the, the direction that the board of selectmen and town administrator would like to see performance for, and decommissioning for the solar fields. I've reached out to the lawyer just to notify them that they will need to rework their decommissioning plan.
Okay.
Additionally, Acushnet will not be accepting any sort of salvage credit towards decommissioning charities, and they will need to be at 2.5 inflation rate for a 20-year period to account for that. If a bond is being posted with the town, it needs to be a double A rating. The company posting the bond needs to have a double A rating, and then the planning board and town planner will also need to be notified 60 days prior to the bond not being in effect, that the company is with a good standing with their bond company and that the, the premium's been for that year.
Okay.
You guys all set with that one?
That's fine with me. Do you need a motion to continue to the next meeting?
We should be okay on that one. I can, that won't be an issue.
Okay.
Why don't we just do it anyway?
Okay, I would make a motion that we continue the hearing for the solar array at Cushing Lane.
All right, yeah.
Uh, with the Acushnet Solar LLC as applicant to our next meeting, which is going to be when?
Uh, I have the schedule, one moment. August 11th.
August 11th, okay.
Is that what you have there, on the plan, or next meeting, August 11th?
Yes.
August 11th. Is there a second on that?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. With that discussion, A and F, to Form A, you going to continue that till the next meeting?
Yeah, I, you know, if I want to go through the spiel here, I want to do it one time, not, not twice.
Okay with that?
Yeah.
Current planning, town planner update, updated planning and filing schedule, revised solar bylaw for consideration, rezoning bylaw for consideration. Do we have to get up?
I now have to, I guess.
Relax.
We can hear you.
Yeah. All right, so we'll start with the updated planning and filing schedule. I had Paul send this out to all the board members earlier in the month. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to review it.
Wow.
Yep, just to make things a little, a little more consistent and have a little clear cut moving forward. I've had the dates for planning board meetings scheduled for the next, until the next fiscal year, essentially. And this includes a submission deadline for site plan review, special permits, and subdivision plans. So, there'll be an initial submission deadline, which will give the planner and the planning office a month to review any plans and get back to the developer if there's any changes that need to be made to plan during the application material. I've also included, for any public hearings, the first, the first legal ad date that needs to be run by. And then the final application deadline is going to be a week prior to our meeting date, so that will make sure that all revisions are within, are in by that date. And then I have also updated the fee schedule. The, the, all the, all the fees still remain the same. Just something I have noticed going through this past year is we've, we've had some issues gathering legal ad fees from, from companies. So, I think right off the bat, when they're submitting their, their application fee, we collect a legal ad fee, knowing that they're going to be going in for a public hearing. At any point, we need to return some funds from that legal ad fee. We'll be able to do that. That'll be a 15 per G account.
That's fine.
And other than that, this is posted on the planning board's webpage, on, planning board's page on the Acushnet website, for any developer to see moving forward, and I will be having this posted outside of the planning board's office.
Well, I guess the way this is good, because there's no guessing, you know, when the, the meeting's...
Yeah.
Somebody wants to do any long-range thing because they want to do a project and they got an idea of what's going on.
Yeah, and then like for, even for the board members, if somebody's not able to be here, at least they...
You know well in advance.
Yeah.
That's good.
Uh, revised solar bylaw, still working on that, still preparing all the language for that. I had a little hiccup with my Microsoft Word this past week, so hopefully come August 11th. Actually, definitely come August 11th, I will have the draft all prepared. We have an anticipated date for a fall town meeting, so the timeline that we're looking at, we'll need to hold two public hearings come September, so our two September meetings will also be public hearings for any bylaws that will be coming up. And then prior to that, sometime in August, the board of selectmen will also be reviewing any other bylaws that will be coming from the planning board's office. And that goes for the same thing with the rezoning bylaws for consideration. We also, we mentioned that Bradford Street, and I think a big thing with that was we had, I had 12 to 13 buildable, potential of 12 to 13 buildable lots. There's not going to be 12 to 13 homes out there. It's three houses that are going to be built once that's rezoned. It's really to rectify a mistake that was made in zoning, where the, the district ends right in the middle of the street, and it really should encompass that other lot. It's to create greater conformity. And that's, again, what we're going to be approaching town meeting with. Sorry. And then some long-range planning. So, we have MASH plan, Open Space and Recreation Plan. So, some good news I got this morning through the state and working with our representatives in the area, we were able to secure $25,000 to start work in updating our MASH plan. Although, it's just a start. It's, we're well underway and hopefully be able to start sending out RFQs to some companies to come in and start doing some of that work. Yeah, that kind of wraps up my end of things, and then we did have to look back to, we'll, we'll get to some, some correspondence from the beginning of the meeting. we'll, we'll get to some, some correspondence from the beginning of the meeting. So we've got a, a letter from Mark Zanirizio. Dear members, it is very sad as I inform you of my resignation from this board effective August 1st, 2022. It has been my privilege to serve my fellow Acushnet residents for many years. My current health unfortunately requires my full attention. I can no longer devote the necessary time to serve on this board. I want to thank the residents of Acushnet for allowing, uh, allowing me to participate in making our town a better place to live. I am thankful to all the members of this board, past and present, for the opportunity to serve. It has been an honor to work among those who work tirelessly to ensure Acushnet and save community. I also have a letter from Pam, uh, just kind of to paraphrase, paraphrase some of the, the stuff. Um, so if there's a vacancy on a board consisting of two or more members, the remaining members will get written notice thereof within one month, said vacancy to the selectmen. We'll have to go to similar route to have, when we appointed a member, uh, we appointed Mark Francois to the board. We'll have to have a joint meeting. Uh, I've been talking to Jamie a little bit, and I am hoping that our second meeting in August, we will be able to appoint that, uh, appoint the new member at that time. We, at, at this point, we'll, um, the planning board will start accepting, uh, letters of interest for, for the open seat on the planning board, and any letters of interest can be submitted to the board selectmen's office. And I, I'd just like to say a few things to Mark. You know, my, my, my first, first time in, a town planner, getting in here and, uh, again, getting to work with you as the chairman's been an honor, and I, I just want to thank you for everything you've done and, and, uh,
I hope they give you a raise.
Just, uh, thank, thank you for, uh, all, all the years of service to the town of Acushnet and, and it's going to be appreciated. We're going to miss you a lot.
Appreciate it. I think you guys should vote for a vice chair. Unless you want to put Mark Francois as, as a chairman and one of you guys be a vice chair.
We'll have to, we'll have to get him here first.
No, let's sneak him in. You snuck me in like that. Every time I was gone, you put me in as a chair. Payback, payback.
Is, is, is Mark willing to be the chairman?
Uh, I've, I've spoken with him. Um, I think the big thing is we will need to have a vice chair, and, um, yeah, I would like to see one of the more experienced planning board members to at least assist him to get to that point of being the chair, but he is act, willing to take it on and he wants to do it.
I, I'd be willing to do the vice chair.
Yeah, just in case.
Just in case he's on the elbow. I understand.
Okay.
That, that's, that's okay.
Okay.
Like I said, I, I also am trying to, uh, get rid of some of my clerical duties around my own office. And, and this one too, and, you know, and certainly, Mark, I mean, we all appreciate your, your work here, uh, as chairman. I mean, a lot of people don't realize how much, how time-consuming it is
Absolutely.
To, to get everything together before the meetings to, to talk with Doug. You, you end up talking with other people too through the day. And, uh, I mean, I was chairman for a long time, and believe me, I, I appreciate the time you've spent as chairman.
You've spent it for many, many years.
Beyond what you would believe.
So with that, I'll make, you'll have to make the motion to make Rick the vice chair? Or I'll make the motion to make Rick the vice chair?
Oh, I make a motion to make Rick the vice chair?
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it. At least that'll help.
Yeah, yeah.
When you come to the next meeting.
Yeah, next meeting, we'll be able to appoint a chair and we'll have the, the vote then as well for that.
And you guys, I mean, you got Doug, he's done a pretty, pretty good job. If he gets more money, he'll do a better job. But, uh, I can't thank everybody, and there's, like I said with the assessment meeting the other day, there's 7,000 registered voters in Acushnet. Somebody should just step up, somebody new, someone who does the business. These two guys have been in the business for a long time. They do a great job. Doug is here. Just enjoy, come and have it, do it for another 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm on board because of him.
Anything else? That's it?
No, that, that wraps it up.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second that. All in favor?
Aye.
You need any of this? Thanks, folks. Have a great August.